I needed, I need to hit it sign like pull an air fire though. I'm gonna call the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
That's their mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow and Councillor Pictionary.
Uh, councillor Woodrow and councillor Pictionary are excused for the evening. We've got, I believe, two items tonight, two items tonight. Uh, the new fire engine at station fourteen with Fire Chief Mike Keven. If you, do you want me to yell, come on, Dan?
Yeah. Waiting for the form. At the podium, perfect. Well, thanks for having me. Um, we wanted to share our new fire engine with you. Um, and in some discussions with uh, staff, just kind of recognizing we're still in this hybrid environment. Uh, it was decided that here at the work session with the AIS and the uh, pictures that we sent ahead of time. Would be a good opportunity, but for those who want to see it in person. Uh, don't tell them yet, but we have assigned the crew to be down here for the trick or treat. Uh, with the new fire engine so that both staff and the community get an opportunity to, to look at it, get their hands on it and, and see um, this investment that the city made. Um, but basically, uh, we wanted to express our, our gratitude for the investment uh, that uh, the city and the council have made uh, within the fire department with the newest fire engine. Uh, which is stationed out at engine fourteen at forty eighth and Main Street. It replaces uh, an engine from nineteen ninety seven, so it sounds old, um, but we, we like to use our apparatus frontline for a period of time and then move them uh, uh, to slower stations and then eventually into reserve status before we move them out. So this newest fire engine, um, it meets some new goals of ours, uh, both in uh, crew safety, the overall vehicle construction, its power plant. It has disc brakes, um, is incredibly safe to drive and navigate through our community streets. Uh, the apparatus is designed um, to remove carcinogens from the cab, meaning the crew is able to keep their toxic firefighting gear in compartments that are accessible, um, but on the outside of the apparatus. Other design things that we took into account, um, that you'll seen on some of the pictures that we sent over. Um, were some accessible hose beds, meaning that crews didn't have to jump onto the side of the fire truck. To deploy a hose on a fire, reducing the injuries, uh, back injuries from twisting, turning, etc. Our ladders, um, are pulled straight out of the back of the truck, which is uh, a little bit smoother, uh, safer. Um, but also it reduces the amount of time to get the ladder out on the ground to make rescues from elevated positions. Um, so this investment that the city's made is, is truly valuable uh, to the fire department and our overall planning and deployment. Um, so with that, I trust that you guys got your pictures in the, the AIS and had an opportunity to, to review them. If you had any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Hey Leonard.
So, um, if uh, the ladders pull straight out of the back of the truck, the uh, that reduces the odds of our riding up and down on the ladder.
Oh no, there's still a ladder truck out there.
Oh, okay.
Tower, tower three is still in existence. These are only twenty-four foot long and that one's a hundred feet.
Alrighty.
So there's, there'll still be an opportunity there. We'll be back at you here in a few years to talk about replacement of that one too.
Good deal.
Hey Leonard, you noticed that it's at the fire station nearest to Ward four?
Well, I would hope so.
It's that kind of service and if it, and if we take it down to a trick or treat, you have to let other, other people sit in the front seat.
Okay, well.
Unfortunately can't monopolize the entire.
We'll see.
All right. Other questions? So. Yeah, that's what, th- this one was, this one was pretty easy. So what kind of mileage is a thing like this?
Um, do we have to have that in the public setting now? Uh, they're, they're not the most fuel efficient, uh, but technology is, is now starting to emerge with hybrid fire trucks. Uh, Portland's testing one right now. They say it's electric, but it has a big diesel power plant in it as well, um, to make sure that we can still do our work. And so we've got our eyes on that, but these are investments that you see you make, you know, they're twenty-five years at a time. Um, and so catching up with those, those savings and, and those opportunities. They come over, over time with technology and we definitely have our eye out on that.
Corey.
It's beautiful. That's why, where I have no questions. I'm excited to see it. It's gorgeous. I always, I always like a shiny red fire truck, so I'm excited about it.
They're fantastic. And this is our third iteration of, of what we call the metro spec, right? The Eugene Springfield specification for a fire truck. Um, we've kind of, we've kind of honed it in. Um, this is the one and this is the first one that, that's arrived. But I'm, I'm sorry councillor Mo that it's not orange.
I already asked him if it was orange, so.
So we've got one left. One.
Well. Steve, it's the Springfield Eugene Metro Spec, if that helps.
Well, and, and like I told councillor Mo, I think for the record, uh, Springfield changed from orange to black over red before the merger. And, and they set the, the metro color scheme for us, so. This is, this is a, a Springfield was a frontrunner on that.
Great. It, it looks absolutely beautiful. I can't wait to see it.
Yeah, we're looking forward to showing it off and again, just appreciate the investment and wanted to make sure you guys knew about it.
Okay, great. Hopefully we'll see you again soon for other fire issues.
Well, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure we've, we've got plenty to work on.
All right, thanks, Steve. All right. The next one is Springfield's evolving housing strategy with Katie and Erin. Ooh, in, live and in person.
Right, thank you.
Well, I can tell the story about pausing for station identification.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and get started while Erin pulls stuff up because we don't need to share the screen right away. Is this good? Okay, great. So, good evening, Marion councillors. My name is Katie Carroll and I'm the city's housing analyst. And this is Erin Fife Field and she is the community development analyst. Um, so the purpose of tonight's session is really to give the council an opportunity to see all of the work that the city is currently doing to address Springfield's housing needs in one place. Um, usually when we're coming to you, it's to discuss one or a few programs at a time. So it's been a while since the council has been able to see the breadth of the work that the city is doing on housing. Um, and then maybe the first time for some members of the council. So tonight's also an opportunity to review and provide any feedback on the draft updated housing strategy. Um, this is something that council directed staff to work on back in May. Um, and that's attachment to in your packet tonight, or obviously if you're in the council chambers, we've given you a copy of that. We've also in the packet, um, given you the current draft, uh, sorry, the current housing strategy handout. So that's attachment three. Um, and I say current, but I think it was last updated in January of twenty nineteen, but just to give you an idea of what that looked like. Um. So the housing strategy originally came out of several discussions that council had between twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen about Springfield's housing needs and what the council wanted to do to address those. Um, and those discussions were based on some pretty extensive staff analysis done at the time that found that Springfield generally uh, needed a greater supply of housing kind of across the housing continuum. So in terms of diversity and affordability. And the original packet that kicked. Oh, sorry. Oh, I think you need to. Mute. Okay, sorry about that tech issue. Um, so the original packet that kicked off, um, those discussions that has all the staff analysis that was done at that time is hyperlinked in your memo. Should anyone want to go back and look at that? Um, and since the housing strategy was put together, obviously, uh, the city has made progress on implementing some of the actions council identified. And then we've also been able to do some additional work when we've received um, one-time funds. So for example, uh, COVID dollars, there were some um, funds that went towards housing during that. Um, so as part of fulfilling state requirements that came out of House Bill two thousand and three and twenty nineteen, the city and the council are going to do a much deeper dive on housing in the coming years. Um, and that's to create the housing capacity analysis. So you probably have heard of that as the housing needs analysis and then also a housing production strategy. And what those processes will have us do is I uh, anticipate Springfield's housing needs for the next few decades. And then um, it'll require the city to determine what actions it would like to take to help meet the housing needs that have been identified through that process. So this state mandated process will allow us to revisit what the city's currently doing to address housing and then to discuss other strategies that the council might want to implement to help meet the housing needs that have been identified. Uh, tonight's packet and session are really more focused on reviewing the efforts that council has already approved that are in place or being worked on to address housing in our community. Um, we're going to keep our presentation fairly short to give you ample time to discuss um, what the city's currently doing. Ask any questions of staff about those programs and then obviously give any feedback you'd like on that draft handout. Um, and for our presentation, we're going to walk through the handout to help orient council to what's on it. Um, and then turn the time back over to you. The goal of the handout is hopefully to give council and the city something that can be shared with our partners and the public. Um, that gives a quick overview of what is going on in Springfield in terms of housing and then what actions the city is currently taking that council has approved. Erin, if you could pull that up. Um. And before we get started, I just wanted to give thanks to Brooke Mossifin on our communications team. She's a really talented graphic designer and was super instrumental in helping us get this put together. So we're going to start with the backside of the handout or the second page tonight. Um, so what this has on it are just some highlights of data around um, what's going on in Springfield in terms of the housing market and development. And there is more data available to you in attachment four of your packet, which is the housing uh, data snapshot, I believe is what we called it. And neither of those is really a comprehensive look at housing needs or development trends in Springfield. Um, the purpose more is just to give council some additional background information um, on what's going on right now. So again, that's something we're gonna have to dive into more in the next couple of years for those state mandated processes. So on this left side of the handout, um, this is really focused on uh, Springfield's housing market. So what I'll highlight from here is Springfield does have a really low vacancy rate. That's something that the city has, um, had as a challenge for several years. Again, that's related to a need for more supply of housing. And then could you scroll down a little bit? Um, the bottom part of this left side is communicating some information about what's going on in terms of uh, the cost of housing and the availability of housing in Springfield. And then top right of the handout. Um, so this is talking about what types of housing Springfield has and development. So Springfield does have a mix of different housing types. Um, it is majority single family or single unit dwellings. Uh, the city has issued a lot of building permits in the last several years, which is great. That speaks to that need for increased supply. You scroll down a little. And then this bottom right corner, um, is just providing some context on the need for housing that's affordable in the community. And what I'll draw your attention to on this is that pie chart in the bottom right corner. So what this is saying is that fifty-three point eight percent of Springfield um, households are homeowner households and forty-six point two are renters. So we have slightly more homeowners than renters in the community. And then of homeowners, twenty-five percent, so about a quarter of those are cost burdened. And almost half of renters, forty-six percent are cost burdened. And that's a term that we use to talk about housing affordability. Um, and what cost burdening means is that if a household's paying thirty percent or more of their income on housing, they're considered cost burdened. Um, so that's kind of what this back page is showing and I'm gonna turn it over to Erin now to um, walk us through the front page and what Springfield is currently doing.
Thank you, Katie. Um, so as Katie mentioned, the handout is a summary of the actions that you all have approved over the years. Um, it's meant to serve as the summary. Um, and these are actions again that address uh, housing needs to both increase the supply um, of housing as well as accessibility of affordable housing and sort of maintaining existing stock. Um, I'll mention that this list of actions include, um, they recognize ongoing and one-time state and federal funds that are also intended to assist affordable housing developers with their projects and to support existing low-income homeowners and homebuyers with financial assistance. Um, just as a reminder for us all, the city does not own or develop housing. Um, sort of we help, we work with partners sort of in the community to help them figure out how can they best develop what is needed in the community. And to also recognize that there are a number of market forces that the city does not control that also affect the development of housing. And so this list is sort of a summary of actions that are, that are within the city's control that you've chosen sort of to act on. Um, and I guess the last point I'll make is that there are certainly community partners um, that we've seen, certainly MW, MC and others that have sort of stepped up and also made efforts to sort of again, help to increase the supply of affordable housing. So again, this is just what city council has chosen within sort of the control that you have. So I'll just touch um, a little bit on the list to highlight some things that may be new or have changed since the last time we've brought this to you. Um. So starting with the sheltering section, um, since twenty sixteen, the city has continued to support the overnight parking program. Um, recently you've expanded um, sort of where folks uh, living in vehicles are allowed to park. Um, during the pandemic, we've also seen additional need for shelter. Um, and we've seen that with your decisions to sort of recently renew the um, RV ordinance serving as temporary housing. Um, but then also to approve emergency shelter um, with mainstream housing, for example, and the palace shelters. Um, that most recently came in as a um, sort of, I guess, longer-term sheltering site under House Bill two thousand and six. Um, and as well, I'd say under shelter, the city has continued to support uh, Egan warming. Um, we've sort of still trying to figure out how to make that a sort of a long-term situation. Um, and I believe the CETA item after this work session, we'll talk about it further. Um. Under the affordable housing development section, you'll see a lot of these activities are mostly determined by federal funds that the city receives. Again, to increase the availability um, of affordable rental housing. This includes uh, federal home funds um, that we award to development projects as well as using CDBG funds to look for and acquire land for development projects. Um, there are also additional sort of recognizing like fee waivers and tax exemptions that the city has chosen to enact to further support developers developing affordable housing. I'll point out for renter assistance, um, there are two actions listed there, rent assistance for low-income households and support toward the Springfield Eugene Tenants Association. Both of those activities are one-time, they're um, a result of one-time CDBG coronavirus relief funds uh, that council chose to support, but those funds are intended to run out, um, be fully used by the end of this fiscal year. So it's included here as a step that's been taken, but just really highlighting it is a one-time effort. Um, the homeownership assistance, again, home report, the home repair program and the Springfield homeownership assistance program, um. Those two programs are funded with CDBG funds. Again, each year the question comes to council, how would you like to award CDBG funds? And as long as I've been here and before, this council has said yes to supporting existing homebuyers, um, existing homeowners, um, with needed repairs to sort of maintain the housing stock, but then also helping low-income owners get into a home in Springfield. Um, and so then finally, the bottom right, housing diversity and production section sort of calls out what the city is doing, um, to increase uh, the supply of a housing and the diversity of housing, but not tied to income. So those actions are, we're talking about the development code, certainly um, update that we saw in July one. But then also the recent uh, SDC waiver, um, sorry, not the recent, but the SDC waiver for ADUs and then sort of the continue a conversation around housing diversity tax exemption um, for multi-unit housing. So, um, it's kind of a summary of all the things. Um, but again, just wanted to present it in this format, so it's all in one place. Um, as a means of something we can talk to our partners about, you can speak to and get a fuller picture of what you've all said yes to.
Leonard.
Um, thanks, Mayor. Um. Thanks for the report. Um, I I wonder if there could be another category of what you might call underhoused. Um, people who are living in buildings or structures that are not really designed for housing, like storage sheds or garages or abandoned buildings. Um, if you, um, if somebody's living out of their car, are they considered unhoused?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, if they're living in someone's garage.
I mean, I guess it ultimately comes down to who's defining it, but HUD would say yes.
Okay. Um, so this, this nine hundred and ninety um, includes the figures of people who are living through the kindness of other residents.
So that figure, um, that you're talking about that's on the handout. So that's something that Lane County puts together and they actually, sorry, I'm just flipping to it so I can make sure I'm speaking into it correctly. But I think that they do not count, um, some of what you are referring to. So, um, that number doesn't include individuals who are in transitional housing or doubling up. So I think, um, when you're saying if someone's staying in someone's garage, I think that's more of a doubling up situation, so it may not be capturing that.
Okay. Um, that's, that's what I got right now. Thanks.
Corey.
Is this, is this the place where we get to talk about all the things? Okay, good. Um, I got things. Um, first, I really appreciate this because it's great to see it all together. And I think that, you know, a lot of these are past decisions and we, this is we're seeing transitions around this, we're seeing more funding coming in for some things, a few things I want to just sort of chat about. And I think, and again, this is my opinion, I'm one person, unless I convince everybody else that I know what I'm talking about. But, um, in the sheltering, we have not really looked into like transitional housing or, um, you know, what would that look at if we had it look like if we had tiny homes and, you know, sort of like a square one villages kind of thing in Springfield? And I think particularly as we start to have to, to really address the changes in, um, the requirements around um, homelessness in public spaces, just thinking about what, what are we gonna do as a city and what is gonna be our, our priorities around that? And so I think there's room for us to get more intentional about, and again, like I, I'm constantly talking about like, oh, the whole spectrum of housing. And so I've been thinking about what some of the gaps are, and that's one of the gaps for us. Another one, um, like you pointed out with renter assistance, we just do that one-time funding. And I mentioned this a little bit and said, I want to talk about it. Um, and I'm not saying we have to do what Eugene does and there are other municipalities that do it, but they have sort of rental housing code enforcement, um, which provides mediation and kind of does that mediation work between landlords and um, renters that can help to prevent people from becoming homeless? And I know just in my neighborhood, there are people who are in section eight or have, you know, are, are in a, in a substandard housing who are afraid to say anything about repairs or things that they need made because there's no, there's no way to ensure that they're, they're not going to be, you know, homeless. And I was thinking particularly on the other side where you're talking about that, that um, eighty-eight percent of our housing is more than twenty years old. So that just, that sort of code enforcement and that, you know, making sure that people can stay in these homes or they have a place to go with complaints or any of those things. So the, the, I don't even know what Eugene calls it, it's like Eugene housing code, something. And they fund it through, they have like a staff person or two, and if I'm lying, somebody can tell me I'm lying. They have like a staff person or two and it's funded through landlords paying a per-unit fee every year and it's like ten dollars, twenty dollars, something that helps to fund them being able to do this mediation to keep people from becoming homeless because of housing conditions. So that's the thing I would love or something similar, like how do we keep people in their homes to prevent them becoming homeless? Um, and that's a piece that I think that is a possibility for us to dig into a little bit more. And then this, and I know you all probably know about it, um, but you know, House Bill, I think it's twenty-one hundred. I will never be one of those people who knows that, but there's, there's been some work at the state level. Um, a task force to address racial disparities in terms of housing and homeownership. And I think there's some funding that's coming through the county, they may even have the RFP live. Um, to help provide down payments and incentivize homeownership for, um, people of color, that's gonna be throughout the county. I'm not sure how that affects us except for, um, it's just this additional investment into homeownership. And I know we've talked over the past couple of years that, you know, we have that twenty-five thousand dollars for a down payment. And because of the down payment assistance for homeownership, but because of the market, it's been hard to actually spend it. But I would love to see us as the market slows, just kind of just double down or figure out how do we really get intentional about supporting homeownership, particularly for lower-income folks or people who have, you know, had been people of color or people who have marginalized experiences so that we can, um, just invest in that. So I'm gonna stop, I could probably talk forever, as you know, and let other folks talk. I think Damian.
Damian.
Hi, um, so I guess my question is, uh, so, and I've said this before, I mean, I think there's a difference between creating housing and creating communities. And the way I see it, we can bring in people and, you know, and have, have a place to lay their head, but it's not a place that they would consider a home because there's nothing that connects them to that area, to that community. Uh, and kind of piggyback on what councillor always said, you know, as far as, you know, minoritized populations, you know, low, low SCS folks, like, I want them to be able to find a place in Springfield, but the truth of matter is there are just so many elements that will keep people out or they might be there temporarily and then they move out. And so you have a rotation of people who already live versus people actually want to plant roots. And so I'll just curious what type of community organizations or even like small businesses could potentially be subsidized to create, you know, jobs or anything there, because I just really see us focusing so much on housing, but not creating a space that people will want to stay. And so thi- this good is only gonna be temporary versus permanent.
Do you want to go ahead and respond to that?
I guess I'll respond with the thought, um, that this list, I guess I'm speaking from its split, an explicit housing perspective. Um, and in many ways, some, like, a lot of these actions are in response to funding. How do we spend funding to help certain sort of either develop new housing or whatever, that broader question around investment in the community, um, I think is a great one, especially recognizing how do folks stay or how do we get folks to stay? Um, and sort of the, the less tangible, the things that aren't gonna go on the backside of this handout, I suppose, and sort of numbers and data. So, um, I think I, for myself, I think I'm gonna keep that as a nugget, probably when we talk about broader community needs. Um, especially when it comes to like helping small business and are there ways? We're seeing a need for housing as they're maybe preventing someone from moving in and are there ways to sort of connect the two as well? But, um, I don't have an answer per se, but I appreciate the comment and sort of keep it, keep it not in the back, I guess, to the side, somewhere present in the front.
And then I think the only thing I'll add on to that too is, um, pardon me as I look at this, because I'm still getting familiar with what that House Bill two thousand and three process will have us do. But some of what we need to do is speak, um, to fair and equitable housing outcomes, but some of that's talking about, um, displacement and gentrification, things like that too, that I think also, um, speaks to your comment about, your comment question about, um, getting people in the community, but keeping them here too. So that is something that's gonna be part of that upcoming process.
Okay, um, one of the initial comments that I had, and I understand that we're like, this is an iteration on a sheet that we produced three years ago and that we're really gonna dive into, um, how do we actually build some, a strategy that makes some, makes that makes some, makes some sort of sense? One of the places I would like to see a little bit more information is just understanding programming that the county has available, have human services, I mean, that material exists online, it could be a memo that our citizens partake of, right? Because one of the interesting sort of threads that we always talk about with, with folks is, you know, people are going, okay, right? What does Springfield do for human services? And I think the reality is that a lot, the, by, the, one of the core missions is the county, is the health department. Is that they are the pass-through agency for a significant amount of money and resources. So in a lot of ways, I want to see this through a filter of, if the county does a service that we can partake of or utilize, we don't need to duplicate the service. And I think that, that's important for us as a body to understand, but also really important for us to be able to explain to the community. Because that's a kind of a nuanced view on, on how, you know, how government services happen. The city of Springfield is not responsible for all services ever, though we should supplement and figure out how to work on, on housing stock and, and, and how it's created. And work with, work with the county. The second thing that I thought was really, really important about this is if you don't see on the, on the housing snapshot sheet, we've actually issued a lot of building permits. We've had, the last couple of years in Springfield have been good building years. And we've been pretty lucky that, 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 that has happened, right? Because that's been the exercise of all the work that we've done, that has gotten us to this point. Plus, all the work that we've done partnering with people, like the developer around Mark, Mark Colom Meadows to add physically more units. So one question that I, that I am keep, that I keep thinking to myself is, okay, after Mark Colom Meadows is built out, which is probably the biggest open land that we still have left, what's next? Right? Part of that answer, we knows in Glenwood. Part of that answer, you know, is in the sort of Jasper Natron. But trying to get context around, if we need to continue to build density and build more units, right? We need to think pat, like five steps beyond just simply Mark Colom Meadows. And also collectively kind of high-five ourselves because we built a lot of housing the last couple of years, and we still need more. The other, the other thing that I would, I guess, point out about the the housing strategy as a whole, what we created a lot of programs the last couple of years, right? And we've gotten pretty creative for different programs to do, how do we score their effectiveness?
So we've talked about that a little bit too, and I think that's a tricky question to answer because as Erin alluded to earlier, there are all these other forces out there. So where it was available in the memo, we did try and sort of highlight, you know, we've had this many of that. But I think, yeah, it's a tricky question of how do you figure out if this is effective when there are kind of these other forces that impact that?
And then the, I guess, the other, the other couple of, of things that really stuck out to me was, when we talk about a strategy, right? We need to probably, like, we, we, we need to talk more about what the legislative plan for next year is going to be. And, you know, what do we advocate for, from the legislative committee, and how does that tie, tie out? So I think the question, the follow-up question is to try to get a list of other things that we're beginning to track at the state level so that, you know, the, the counselors that sit on that, that committee can really try to dive in and understand, well, where do we put our time and energy that actually frees up resources for us to actually build, build units? And I think lastly, and this is just a, a, a general observation, right? Is that if we go into this, you know, this housing production strategy, this is the classic, classic quandary that the state has, right? If we, if we write a better report, it doesn't actually change, you know, the available units on the ground, right? So I think really unders, maybe understanding or getting a kind of a you know, maybe it's a Gantt chart, but the, the kind of the picture of all the work that the housing groups got lined out for the next year, right? Because there's the housing production strategy, you've rattled off four or five things here. And, you know, there's the mobile home, you know, money that we, that we keep talking about, you know, for Linda Lane. But there's a lot of other pieces that are really more forward-facing. This, this is a good document that is sort of a backward-facing, what did we agree to now? And I'm really looking for us to kind of turn the, turn the corner and ask that forward-facing question about, well, what, what's coming at us? Right?
I guess as someone who's not going to lead the House Bill two thousand and three housing production strategy, I think what I'm excited about it is sort of that broader question of sort of, this is what you've agreed to. But that effort is sort of gonna be a little forward-facing to say, what do we need to do to solve these things? As opposed to this is what we're doing because we received money for it, because the state told us we had to do it, et cetera. But now let's think about it and like tie it back to sort of what we're actually seeing the needs are or will be. So hopefully that'll excite that futuristic conversation.
All right.
Leonard. So I, I'm glad you brought up gentrification, because I'm, I'm looking at the average sale price of these houses. And it's not theoretical anymore. I mean, we're, we're not talking about some future event. The, I, I just put the pencil to it. I think the seventy-two thousand is a seventeen percent increase. And over the two years that you're citing here, it's over a thirty percent increase in the average sale price here in Springfield. And that leads me to wonder, when you're calculating the number of homeowners and renters that are cost burdened, do you count somebody who is doubling up? I mean, if they're, if they're paying half the rent on one of these units, are they considered cost burdened?
So I'm not sure the answer to that, because we are not actually counting this. So this is data that HUD gets from the census. So it's how the census calculates it, which I'm not sure.
Well, based on what I was looking at here with a two-bedroom apartment of eleven seventy-six, it would, you would have to be making twenty-three dollars an hour. I mean, not to be cost burdened by that rent. And it seems high.
Yeah, and I guess just some context to what that fair market rent is. So that's a number that HUD calculates every year for a moderately priced unit. And that's kind of a benchmark that they use to figure out what their section eight or their housing choice vouchers are going to be based on and some other project, uh, programs too. So just kind of providing some context of what HUD says a moderately priced unit in the market is.
So in order to qualify for the vouchers, you would have to be burdened in some way? Or how, what, what's the?
Much more complicated. I'm not, I'd have to get back to you on exactly. I think there is very much a formula that HUD loves to sort of create, to sort of figure out what that actually is, but I'm happy to share it.
That would be great.
Yeah, I don't want to miss.
Can you, can we also look at the, the, there's a question on the snapshot side with the top left-hand corner that says, what is affordable housing? And I, and I think it's a, it, it just may be a language piece, right? Because that's that cost burden threshold, but also we describe affordable housing like a product, you know, too. And we're sort of, you know, we're, and that just may be a point that's got to be clarified.
What, so yes, what is like affordability and?
Yeah, right, affordable, affordable housing to people, you know, in the middle part of their career or professionals, right? I guess there's a difference between what is affordable based on your income level versus what is affordable. Housing is a product in the, in the market.
Great, yeah, we can clarify.
All right, other questions? The data log is really interesting, like, you know, and I think you guys said Brooke helped put it together. But like, just to see what the rental picture is and understand what the actual cost, you know, cost level is, like, it is a really good spreadsheet. Corey.
Yeah, I had to add to that. I mean, I don't know that that's, that this is part of this conversation. But, you know, down in that, on the snapshot side, down in that lower right-hand corner, you know, just, just thinking about the cost burden of housing for homeowners and renters. I mean, it's so high, and I think that just, it just touches on so many things. So I'm just saying that out loud and that it's just, it just, yeah. Because the, the, that's not just about housing, that's about all of the things and I just saying that out loud.
Okay, anybody else? So we will probably see you guys again in the winter?
About something, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'll just add, this is going to be made available on the website where it'll live and probably have copies in C M O. But however, that way you can direct folks to it or reference it as you see fit.
And go ahead, Steve.
I've been quietly pushing more housing, we need more housing, need more, more housing, all kinds for everybody. And whatever it is, we need to do it. It's general.
Yes, and I appreciate that because the one thing I wanted to say, this is going to be on the website. And I wonder also if I, I would love to hear from folks, especially as we're thinking forward. And I don't know if that's just people come talk to us, or if we do some sort of intentional outreach or surveys or things to just sort of find out where people are coming out of the pandemic, where people are coming in this maybe is, maybe isn't recession. I mean, I, I would love to hear from folks about what their needs are, what they see their needs are, what kind of housing do they think they're going to be in ten years from now? And I mean, I know that's a lot, but it's just to actually have that dialogue with the residents of Springfield. And to include some of those things that, like Counselor Pitt says, you know, like, is it just about cost burden? Or is it, are there community factors that we, as policymakers, may be able to influence? That's going to make it easier, better, whatever for folks to stay. So if there's a way to do some sort of outreach and really start to get some engagement, I would love to hear that too.
Okay, two more things and then we, we really will let you, let you go. As a group, I think we need to keep talking about this to our team Springfield partners. One of the things that's not, that does not really come out in this is the different roles other governments play from everything from their system development charges to the electric rate to really make housing affordable. And that's not like we, I'm sure those issues are out, you know, we can find some that can, that we can identify. But us telling other boards that this is important and they should look at other poli, the policies that they have that contribute to, you know, the housing crunch that we're in, is an important way, way to sort of message this. The other piece that I think is really important is we, we have a lot of programs already in the city, right? Like, and we have a lot of programs that exist in, in the county, and we have, I don't know, like thirty-five hundred nonprofits that are in Lane County. Really, as, as we continue this conversation, I would love to make, to really look at what people are doing and not try to add more programs, more, more programs, more organizations, more sort of overhead. But instead ask the question that says, okay, if we see something that we need, maybe somebody does it, we just have to scale it differently. Or we need to expand it, or we need to, like, we don't need to, you know, the last thing we need to do is add more programs without looking at holistically what the whole picture is so that we can see if, see if somebody has, has a solution already. And find a piece of land, because when we go to Home Consortium, I'm tired of hearing it from Corey about land banking.
On an official land bank program in Springfield, Oregon, we're doing it, you're doing it, I appreciate it.
All right, I know we gave you lots of opinions. Thank you, it looks good, we'll talk to you guys soon.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thanks.
And that's the last item for us, so I'm going to adjourn the work session, don't go anywhere. We, no, we, we are going to a different link for the, the CETA.
Go somewhere else.
Yes. Yes, so if you're in the room, you do not have to leave, but if you're watching at home, pull up the new link.